Okay, I'd like to call the regular school committee meeting to order today being September 26, 2017. We are at the Higgins Middle School Library. We have a full board, all six members are here today, as well as our superintendent, Dr. Herbert Levine, our assistant superintendent Kara Mertag, our business manager Jared Stanton, and our human resources director Steve Farrell. Nice to have all of you here today. The meeting is being recorded tonight by the PBD School Committee's recording secretary, and we are being broadcast on PAT. The matters listed on our agenda are those reasonably anticipated by the chair which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. I'd like to first start off the meeting, if everybody could please stand for a moment of silence, and then we will go right into the Pledge of Allegiance.
I would ask Mr. Buckley, the principal of the high school, to introduce our student advisory council, students who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Sure. Tabitha. Bono, she's a senior, Ann Manning. We have also a senior. We also have Rebecca Tron from sophomore, and Audrey Gabriel, a junior.
Thank you. Okay, ladies, when you're ready.
I'd like to use the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And, Mr. Buckley, do you want to bring them up so that they can do their report?
Yes, please. Come on up, right up here. Anne, you remember this. Come on up.
Good, aren't you?
I'm gonna have to share some microphones a little bit as well. Mr. Buckley, welcome. Thank you for being here with us today.
Thank you for having us.
And turn it over to our students. Whoever's ready to go, please, actually, why don't we just, because I don't know if people heard the names, because we didn't have the microphones over in that location, but if you could please introduce yourself, your name, and your grade.
I'm Anne, and Anne Manning, and I'm a senior.
I'm Tabitha Bono, and I am also a senior.
I'm Rebecca Tron. I'm a sophomore.
I'm Audrey Gabriel, and I'm a junior.
Great. Welcome to all of you, and thank you for being here. So, Anne, you want to start us?
Yeah, I'll start off. So, I'm gonna start off with the, some of the new additions to our school, positionally wise and like physically wise. Mr. Buah, our new athletic director, has been doing a great job keeping up with all the sports teams and making sure everything's going great with all of us. We have the new gym floor that was renovated over the summer, that came out beautiful. The new auditorium that's being well-used by the Stage One and Drama Chorus and Chorus classes. Our two new deans, Mr. Tarallo and Ms. Wilmont. The new roof that was completed over the summer, and our new tennis courts. They've also been trying out free admission to the football games for students. If you just show your student ID, you don't have to pay admission to the football games, which used to be three dollars to get in. And soccer celebrated their senior night yesterday, and all the other sports teams have been doing great. And I'm actually on the volleyball team, and we just, we've been doing a fundraiser for leukemia. My dad passed away last May from leukemia, and we've been doing a fundraiser for research. We've been selling these shirts that I'm wearing, that says Tanner Serve for Leukemia, and on the back they say In Memory of Bob Manning. And today, we were notified that we're gonna be receiving an award from the MIAA, the MIAA Educational Athletics Achievement Award for Community Service, for everything we've done over the past few weeks to raise money and awareness for leukemia.
That's terrific. Thank you, Anne. We're very proud about that. We're gonna talk more about that shortly, but thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, sorry. So, I'm Tabitha Bono. I'm co-president of the senior class along with Anne Manning, and we're, I just wanted to talk a bit about the senior events that we've held so far this year. Our big event that just took place was the Senior Lual held at the Conlon Restaurant. That was a big turnout for us, as we, it was kind of like an informal kind of dance along with a buffet. It was a nice way to bring everyone together. And this year that we decided to do a homecoming instead of our annual Halloween dance, as kind of a senior fundraiser, but instead, we're gonna try to incorporate all grades can come to this dance. It's gonna be held in the cafeteria part of the school, and it's gonna be the day before the spirit rally held every year. And just by announcing it, we can see that there was a much more excitement compared to before with the Halloween dance that seemed to be a little more kind of clicky, and like a lot of different groups would go, and not a lot of people would feel as included. And the ticket tally is gonna count towards like pep rally points and stuff like that, so it's really bringing up a lot of enthusiasm. Another thing is we've had our annual college fair held at the PBD High last week. Over 100 colleges attended. It was about 100 schools with about one admissions director, someone working in the admissions department, to talk to students and families interested in the schools, and over about 700 students attended this event. I don't know if I mentioned, but this was held in the cafeteria. We had the SATs held this Saturday for juniors, and this is more of a senior SAT that signed up for, because it's right before our early action school deadline, so anybody trying to take the SAT before that deadline, signed up for this exam. So, yeah.
Thank you, Tabitha. That was terrific. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Audrey. I'm a junior. And so, going further with what Anne and Tabitha said about the new things that we've been doing at PBD High, Mr. Quist, our new guidance director, has been really helpful and super on top of every little thing going on in high school and in the city. I know he's been emailing students almost like weekly, if not like every other day, about opportunities for community service, just jobs outside of school, and other programs to help supplement, you know? Any students who wanna pursue like a medical education, like he emailed about some of these preparatory programs that colleges like Harvard University are doing. And it's been really great to be exposed to all these new programs that we don't normally get to see, and so that's been new. Upcoming, we have PSATs this weekend, which I know for juniors like myself and sophomores like Rebecca, will be signing up for and taking. Along with that, we have our own teachers, like Mrs. Monzo, who are hosting cancer walks Saturday at Wakefield Lake, and I know lots of students have signed up for that to help volunteer, whether it be for a cause personal to themselves or just to help out and support. It's really been a team effort on his part and everyone else into making sure that everyone is fulfilling community service requirements. I know my class and all the upcoming classes have the 40-hour requirement to graduate, and it's been a lot easier to make that possible with him giving out opportunities. And going further, I'm part of lots of performing arts groups, and I know that we are having our first acoustic coffee house this Friday, held by Corral, and this Saturday we'll be having our annual talent show. And so, all of the proceeds from this are going towards our trips towards the end of the year, which we do, we compete in music festivals in different states, and recently we just had our performing arts can and bottle drive and can wash, car wash, which was hugely successful. It was one of the biggest fundraisers we did, and we're really proud of that, and so we've just been doing lots of great things in the programs at school.
Great. That's terrific. Thank you, Audrey. And you mentioned the talent show, that's this Saturday?
This Saturday, yes.
At the high school. Do you know what time?
7:00 PM, I believe.
Seven?
Doors open.
Okay, great. Thank you. Rebecca, welcome. You ready to jump in?
I think we've had everything that we've needed.
Excellent. I didn't mean to put you on the spot like that. Sorry about that.
Yeah, if I could, Rebecca came to our meeting today for the first time, and she said, "I'd love to come, but I'm just gonna observe this first time," so I promised her that she wouldn't have to talk unless she wanted to. Just to add in, when they were talking about a few things, our medical assisting classes and some of our students went out to the elementary schools. I don't know, we kind of left that off the list. This is always, again, I've said this a lot of times, we have these meetings on a Tuesday, and we kind of have lunch together, and we just talk about a lot of things that are going on in the school, and it's really actually nice for myself and Mrs. Manning to kind of sit back and listen to the different things that not only are happening in the school, but what are important to the kids. So, that was a situation where the medical assisting kids went out, and they helped with the eyes and ears and the testing, and that was a really nice thing. Kids really enjoyed it. We also had a situation, the hockey coach, teacher, Bob Tierney, who passed away, who was actually my ninth-grade history teacher, and was an inspiration as a teacher. He passed away, and PBD, my coach Leonard took the boys over, hockey team, over to the funeral home for the wake. And I know that, we got a letter just recently about how the family was so impressed that the kids from the Tanner team, he'd been doing some coaching and some helping out there too, scouting the last few years, and how they were really impressed how the kids carried themselves. And I wasn't surprised, but it's good to know that, I think it was Carl Demeydi that actually sent over and witnessed it, and he thought that the kids were just very mature and well-spoken. So, that was a nice thing for them to do. You know, Bo was well-known throughout the hockey community in PBD, and it was, you know, something that, talking to a Fenwick grad who graduated in the early 80s who played under him, he was also very impressed with how our boys handled themselves. So, I just wanted to make sure that that was also, you know, recognized.
Well, thank you, Mr. Buckley. I'm glad you did mention that. Very well said about Coach Tierney. I want to thank all of you for being here. Every year, and we take this up in the spring, and it's always very difficult for us as committee, we have to make tough decisions as the best way to utilize our money. We have to make investments both in curriculum, but also in, you know, what type of projects we want to do to improve the physical condition of the buildings and the grounds. And it's important for us to hear if those investments and those decisions we made are working, if they're appreciated, and, you know, the students, because we're, what we're trying to do is make sure as best we can to give you all the tools that you need in order to, in order to reach your dreams. But we also want you to have the technology that you need. We want you to have, to be proud of the buildings that you go to school at. You know, I know you guys missed out on this building, but we wanted to try to make as best we can the high school look better. And that's why we invested as a city and as a school committee in the auditorium and the gymnasium, the cafeteria a few years ago. We've been trying to make the fields better, and I think there's some other things we're looking to do in the future. But it's important for us to hear the input, to hear your thoughts and opinions, because that's very much taken into effect when we do our, when we do our research and try to make the tough decisions that we have to when, when the spring comes and every year, every year when we do the budget. So, it means a lot to have you here, and I know you'll be coming every now, every couple of months during the course of the year to give us updates. And we like to hear what's going on, the events, because I know everybody here likes to go to the events as much as they can. So, thank you very much, all of you, for being here.
Thank you.
This is great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I might, before Eric leaves, I'd like to thank him for the heroic deeds that he and his staff, including nurses, performed the other day in saving a student's life. And our people acted with calm and purpose, and with all the training that they had had, implemented that training. And if they didn't act the way that they did in the timeframe that they did, we would have lost a student. So, thank you very much, Eric.
Thank you.
If I could just say, since this can't be edited, sometimes like the media does, it was a total team effort, and I was very, very proud of how everyone reacted in the building. The students, our nurses were right on the scene, our deans, teachers, everyone had a role to play in this, our security monitors. It was, it was really, people say, geez, it must have been nerve-wracking. It really, it was and it wasn't, because everyone was doing something. And it was amazing how calm everyone stayed, and we were able to obviously get her to the hospital, and from there. I did speak to her today by phone, and I did talk to her father, and she's doing well. There's some things that she's gonna have to go through, and she's looking forward to getting back to school as soon as she could. But I also said to her, you know, take your time. There's other things right now, like your health. And she goes, funny, my father said the same thing, so. But she's looking to get back, and again, it was a total team effort, and I'm very proud to know that if I wasn't in the building, if I was at a meeting, it would have gone smoothly with somebody else there too. So, that's what we train for. You hope you never have to use it, but it just worked out. And I don't think, I said to somebody, I don't think there was a moment where, I didn't think it was gonna be okay. And I know that's kind of crazy to think that way, but it was, it was just that everyone was doing what they had to possibly do. So, and again, thank you so much, and thanks to everybody that was involved in that, and I have that list for you.
Thank you. Now, Anne, before you leave, I would like one of those T-shirts, and I take an extra large, and I will buy one for the mayor, he takes a double XL. You get them to me, and I'll take care of it, all right?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Bye-bye. All right, that was terrific. Now, we'll go to approval of the minutes. We have regular school committee meeting minutes from September 12, 2017.
Make a motion to approve September 26, 2017, regular school committee meeting minutes.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Rozignol. You've heard his motion that was seconded by Mr. Hockman for approval. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Thank you. Next item is approval of bills. Mrs. Carpenter, I'll turn it to you.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant A number 3600 dated October 10, 2017, in the amount of $117,484.67, subject to audit.
Second. Great. You've heard the motion made by Mrs. Carpenter for approval of warrant A, number 3587, seconded by Mr. Rozignol. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant B, number 3601, dated October 10, 2017, in the amount of $659,572.45, subject to audit.
Second. Thank you, Mrs. Carpenter. You've heard the motion for approval of warrant B, seconded by Mr. Rozignol. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Thank you. Our next item is continued business. Mrs. Dunn, anything to report on the MSBA Higgins Project?
Nothing to update tonight, other than to invite everyone to our monthly meeting, which will take place next Thursday, October 19, at 4:00 PM here at Higgins.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Dr. Levine?
Thank you. I have been in touch with Principal Bucie, who has, since this became an issue, has really been on top of the lighting issue, and they are getting control of that slowly but surely. So, I did want you to know, Mrs. Dunn, that they're working on it.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
It's good news.
Thank you. Next item is the Mass Association of School Committee's official delegate form. Mrs. Dunn, turn that to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When I was reviewing some items that came from MASC, I realized that we hadn't taken a vote on appointing a delegate, and we have to do that officially. So, Maj very kindly put in the delegate form, and we would like to ask that we, that we vote to send someone to that conference.
Okay, I think we all know who we're gonna nominate.
I would love to go, I really would.
Who wants to make that motion? Mrs. Carpenter?
Mrs. Dunn, I hope you're ready for this.
I am.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Beverly Ann Griffin Dunn as the delegate for the MASC upcoming conference.
Second. Heard the motion by Mrs. Carpenter, seconded by Mr. Rozignol. On the motion, Mr. Hockman?
I'd just like to thank Ms. Dunn for representing us year after year at this conference. She does a wonderful job representing our school department and our city, and she comes back with a wonderful report every time. So, good luck, Ms. Dunn, and enjoy the conference.
Thank you. And that's also open. We can also appoint alternate delegates as well, if anybody else wants to go. It is a really great experience, there's a lot of information there. Honestly, they always seem to pick the worst time for the conference, to be perfectly honest. So, I know it's difficult for people, but it is very worthwhile, so it is open to others as well.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Hockman. Yeah, and seriously, on the motion, if I can ask Ms. Carpenter to amend the motion to include that the school department pick up any expenses and costs incurred by Ms. Dunn while attending this conference?
So will then.
Yep. The amended motion made by Mrs. Carpenter, seconded by Mr. Rozignol. All in favor?
I have to vote present.
Thank you. Mrs. Dunn votes present. Thank you. Public participation, is there anyone in the audience that would like to come forward and speak? The microphone is open. Next item is the superintendent's report. Dr. Levine?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I sound like I'm talking funny, I'm talking funny, because I did have some jaw surgery the other day, which didn't go all that well, and I'm talking funny as a result. So, excuse me for doing so. I did want to pass out, if you would accept this, please, the comprehensive district review protocol, which our district will be going through starting October 23.
Second.
Heard the motion by Mrs. Carpenter, to receive, seconded by Mrs. Dunn. All in favor?
This is a comprehensive review of how we spend our money and how we comply with state and federal guidelines in special education and a variety of other areas. We're gonna be very busy that week. They'll be here for four days, which is the DESE, that will be sending a team down to go over, really with a fine-tooth comb. I've been through this before in Salem, all of our records pertaining to the areas that are delineated in that, in that packet. So, this is just for your information. I wanted you to know that we'll be going through it. It takes at least four to six months for the state to then compile a report and send it back out. So, you won't hear anything about this until likely the spring. And I'll answer any questions on that if you have them.
Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Levine, I know we've done comprehensive reviews before. There was just something that came down from the DESE about the way they're going to change the evaluations on school districts as far as, you know, they utilize the MCAS exams, they figure out the attendance policy and everything, and I know that they're gonna change that. Is that gonna take any, have any effect on the comprehensive review?
No.
Okay.
It'll have no, no impact. They do comprehensive reviews in singular areas like special education.
Special ed or ELL.
ELL.
Yeah.
They did, last year, if you remember, they did a Volk Ed comprehensive review.
That's right.
And, you know, it's intrusive into our lives, but we get good information from it. So, we have to work hard to comply, but it does give us an indicator as to where it is that we need to do better. So, it's helpful to us at the end. It's time-consuming, but it's worthwhile, I think. So, what, this will, this is a different focus. It focuses a lot on how we spend our resources, and how we comply with federal, state law and policy. For example, they'll want to see how many languages we translate our information, our communications into, and whether or not that fits the languages that are the major languages of the district. They go through all of that stuff. It will be time-consuming, as I said, but in the end, we'll get a good comprehensive report in these areas that will help formulate a direction for us. So, it's a, it's a good process.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Mr. Rozignol?
Thank you. Through the chair to Dr. Levine. I know a few years ago, this board tried to embark on setting our own set of goals and our own processes. Will that be included in this comprehensive review?
It, it might be. I think that the report that you get at the end in the spring might give you direction as to how to change or massage the goals and develop new ones, because it will tell you some of the things that the district needs to work on, and it would be a good policy-setting discussion, once you've had a chance to look at it and go through it. Maybe to have a, a meeting of some sort, and to just designate it for developing goals for the future, based upon a lot of what you might find out here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You see a variety of letters from me to Bill Lupini and from Bill Lupini to me. They intend to establish a medical tech program that we have. They have a right to do that as the comprehensive vocational school. I will support Bill's efforts in doing that. We in turn have asked for Dr. Lupini's efforts, for us to be able to establish two vocational programs, and you see them here. The first one, the web-based program, is something that our Director of Vocational Education, Jody Norton, I keep calling him Nelson, but, Jody Norton Nelson, or Nelson Norton. It happens to be his expertise, and it's something that he is absolutely committed to bringing for our students here. And the other one is a law program that is Chapter 74 certified as well. We have the right to establish these programs because Essex does not have them. It doesn't mean that they won't have them in the future, but we do have a right to establish them because we, Essex does not have them yet, so. Answer any questions?
Thank you. Mr. Rozignol?
On that last point, so you had mentioned that they're looking at starting in a medical assistance program. So, where we already currently have one, is that going to be an issue down the road?
It could be. They could draw our kids that would be interested in our program to their program. That's just the way the law works. The, the comprehensive vocational school to which we belong has the right to establish literally any programs that they want, even if we have them. We do not have the right, as a district school, to establish programs that they already have, but we do have the right to add to our vocational program, programs that they don't currently have.
But, I'm sorry, through the chair. That's not gonna affect our funding if they have a program simultaneous to ours?
No, that will not affect our funding.
Because we've established it first.
That's correct. Well, yeah, chapter, that's a separate funding mechanism. We will continue to be funded the way that we're funded, regardless of whether they have a program or not.
Right. Through, through the chair, just for my clarification, it has to be approved by, by the state?
Yes.
So, where they've already given us approval?
That's correct.
They can't then take it away once theirs is established?
That is correct.
Okay.
The only reason they would take it away is if we weren't complying with, with the vocational procedures.
Correct. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Rozignol. Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Levine, I'm thrilled. I was thrilled to see these letters in the file. I remember last year, the first chance we had to meet Mr. Norton. He had brought some students before us, and I had asked him several questions about vocational opportunities at the high school. And then I told him that, you know, every year I want to see a new program come onboard, but I was gonna give him the honeymoon period, and I'd come after him this year. And I was thrilled to see that he just jumped right in and started this, this, you know, put this forward this year. So, it really, really made me very happy, because I think it's just gonna open more opportunities for more students who want that practical knowledge. And when he explained that, at that meeting, that this, that computer programming was his forte, that just made it all the better, because he could look at our entire program and evaluate it, and then come to us with this suggestion. So, I am absolutely thrilled about this, both programs actually, but especially about the computer programming, because in this day and age, it's just such a necessity to be able to offer some of that to our students, so that they can graduate and go right out into the workforce in the technology field, or they can use that to go on to college and further advance their skills. I think it's an absolutely wonderful idea. I think it's gonna be a great program, and I'm very, very happy that he did that so quickly.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn.
I, I think it's appropriate at this time for me to just say that we should never underestimate, you should never underestimate, the impact that you have as a policymaking board. You don't have direct hiring authority in most cases, but you do have input into funding, you have input into philosophical discussion, and in some cases, you have import- you have input into philosophical discussion, and in some cases, you have input directly into hiring for some positions. Don't forget, as a policy board, you approved, for example, what you heard tonight, a new K-12 Director of Guidance, and you heard from a student the tremendous impact that that's already having on students in our district. Students don't talk about things like that in such glorious ways unless it's really having an impact. So you need to remember how important a role you play in the development and creation and the funding of these positions, so that the vision that you have for the district to move us forward is always forefront for what's good and best for kids, and you do that. And it's not always the case with some cities and towns and some school committees that don't have that vision or don't get along with each other well enough to create those positions. But you have, and I think that starts at the top, and it's very much appreciated by kids that we serve, and you heard it tonight, tremendous impact that you have. We've already talked about the way that our kids at the high school, the hockey team, represented us in another city at a wake, for a hockey icon in this area who passed away. I'd like to thank the hockey coach, the hockey team, and our kids at the high school, who are just tremendous kids, they're tremendous role models. I enjoy going to the high school. Whenever I'm there, I get to interact with these kids. You saw it here tonight, in the Student Advisory Board, but they're all over the place at the high school. It doesn't matter what program they're in, it doesn't matter what pursuit they have or interests they have. We are so well-represented by our kids everywhere we go, whether it be in athletics or extracurricular activities, or just at the high school and through the community. We're so very lucky and fortunate, and that starts with parents and the way that they raise their kids. And it's massaged and helped forward by the school system, the teachers, the caring, talented teachers, our wonderful administrators who work so hard, and you guys, everybody from beginning to end, working together to serve kids. The kids know it, they appreciate it, they love PBID, and they love the PBID public schools, and this is just one example of how much they love it and how well they represent I would ask for your approval for the field trip that you have in your packet to New York City, May 16th through the 18th, and May 23rd through the 25th.
Make a motion to follow the recommendation of the superintendent. Further motion by Mr. Rozignol for approval of the Higgins Middle School trip to New York City?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Dunn. Roll call, vote please.
Yes.
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 Yes, Mr. Hockman.
Abstain.
Yes, and, Mr. Chairman, can you, on that motion, I know you mentioned New York, but we should probably mention Camp Cody as well.
Well, that's going to be...
Yeah, I skipped over it.
Oh.
I'll do it right now.
Oh, okay, sorry about that.
Okay. And I would ask for approval for the field trip of ROTC to Cody Education Center Freedom in New Hampshire, Freedom, New Hampshire, on October 27th, 28th, please.
Make a motion to follow the recommendation of the superintendent.
Second.
Further motion by Mr. Rozignol, seconded by Mrs. Dunn, for approval of the ROTC trip to Cody Education Center. Roll call, vote please.
Mr. Rozignol?
Yes.
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 Abstain.
Yes.
You have the monthly hiring report in your packet. If there are any questions, we will entertain them, otherwise I am done, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thank you. Next item is written communications. We do have one written communication from Bruce Nelson, President of the PBID Federation of Teachers, requesting to begin negotiations. That'll be motion to receive and sent to the appropriate committee?
Motion to receive and send it to the negotiations subcommittee.
Good. Motion made by Mrs. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Hockman, all in favor? Next item is subcommittee reports, and we'll start off with education. Mr. Hockman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had a very, very exciting education subcommittee meeting last week, last Monday. Seems like it was just yesterday. The discussion revolved around the new science textbook adoption and curriculum, and we were pleased that two, excuse me, three elementary school teachers attended the meeting, two elementary school principals attended the meeting, and we talked about the excitement that is present district-wide throughout the elementary schools. We had a grade-two teacher, a grade-four teacher, and a grade-five teacher, and the enthusiasm that they exhibited with regard to the new textbook and the materials that are available now to them, including some manipulatives, they were beaming. It was, we couldn't contain their excitement. It was wonderful, and we will have at our next school committee meeting some elementary school students who will be able to talk to us directly about the impact that this textbook adoption has had on their education, and hopefully they show similar enthusiasm that their teachers do.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Hockman. A good report. Our next item, finance subcommittee, Mrs. Carpenter?
Thank you. I would like to report that I did receive the PBID Federation Teachers' letter to begin negotiations, so I will speak with Attorney Khan to get the ball rolling on that, and I will set up a meeting with the school committee to begin discussing and hearing your ideas of things that you'd like to have discussed in the contract. In addition to that, the finance subcommittee is bringing forward three administrator contracts through the recommendation of the superintendent. They're all in your packet. I'll take them one by one, and the first one will be motion to approve the contract for our Assistant Superintendent Karen Murtagh to commence July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2020.
Second. Further motion by Mrs. Carpenter, seconded by Mr. Hockman. Roll call, vote please.
Mr. Rozignol?
Yes.
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 Mrs. Carpenter?
Yes.
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 I have, the second contract is for our Director of Special Education, Ruth Grooby, and this contract will commence July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2020.
Second. Thank you, further motion by Mrs. Carpenter, seconded by Mr. Hockman. Roll call, vote please.
Mr. Rozignol?
Yes.
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 The next motion is for our Business Manager, Jared Stanton, and this will commence July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2020.
Second. Further motion for approval made by Mrs. Carpenter, seconded by Mr. Hockman. Roll call, vote please.
Mr. Rozignol?
Yes.
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 I'd like to thank all three of those administrators. We appreciate your time and your effort, and that is all I have to report.
Great, well said, Mrs. Carpenter. Thank you for the report, Mr. Hockman, on that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wish Dr. Levine would have oral surgery before every meeting, because he's been giving us accolades all night long. I'd like to take this opportunity to do the same to this committee. The three contracts that we just renewed or extended really show the commitment that this committee is, has in education in the city of PBID. In my opinion, we've extended the contracts and recognized the quality of three administrators who we want here for a long time. They're doing a wonderful job for us, for our kids, for our staff, for our teachers, for our city. So I just wanted to give you guys the credit for recognizing that and pushing these contracts through.
Thank you, Mr. Hockman. Okay, school safety, Mr. Olmio?
Nothing new to report.
Thank you. Athletics and wellness, Mr. Rozignol?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had an athletics subcommittee meeting prior to this meeting. In attendance was Dr. Levine, Ms. Carpenter, and myself. I'm going to hand out a policy with some amended language that I'm going to verbally say, but this is only the first reading, so it'll come back in a second draft form. So if I could have a motion to receive?
Motion to receive.
Thank you. All in favor to receive? Thank you, Mr. Rozignol.
Thank you.
Just give you a second to just review. So over the past few meetings, both as a subcommittee as well as this board, we deemed it be important to allow students to attend both athletic events as well as performing arts events free of charge. So with that said, we developed this policy, like I said, and there's going to be some word changes that I will then forward to Ms. Dunn for some language, and then we'll have it back for a second reading. The estimate for the price tag was about $25,000 to implement this policy as-is. With the added language, that number is actually going to go up to about $30,000 to $33,000, just so the board is aware. So, the only amended language that you do not have before you, which will come back as a second reading, is under, adults will be charged $5 per event. In parentheses, will be all senior citizens, will be admitted free. This is in conjunction with our current policy, which is seniors go to all sporting events and performing arts free. Parents of PBID, on the next line, parents of PBID athletics, and it'll also include fine arts and performing arts, will be afforded two tickets at no charge to regular season slash home performances. Lastly, all students and adults attending athletic events outside, we're seeing by the MIAA, i.e. playoffs, will be charged a rate, including in that is all students attending Drama Fest performances will be charged Drama Fest rates, because those are two different instances that we don't control. And this also has a sunset clause, if you notice in the last line, which will expire on June 30th of 2018. So that, with the added language, that will be the first reading, and then I will take any questions or comments regarding this before I hand this off to Ms. Dunn.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Rozignol. We'll go to Mr. Miko first, and to Mr. Olmio.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through the chair to Mr. Rozignol. Thanksgiving, is that extended, or is that regular season?
So Thanksgiving is not included in this at all, and the reason for that is because the sunset clause goes through June 30th. We do not currently have a Thanksgiving game this year. It is currently at Saugus, so we don't necessarily have to address it until the sunset clause is over.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miko. Mr. Olmio?
Through the chair. Mr. Rozignol, is the, say, the $30,000 impact, is that included? Is that the $5? Is that the rework of the numbers, or?
So...
Does it increase correctly?
Well, it didn't increase that drastically, to be honest with you. So yes, it doesn't encumber that dollar amount, but the added expense, I'll say for lack of a better word, is adding to parents free for all performing arts. Currently, we do not do that as a system, because they don't pay a booster fee or an athletic fee the way that sports do. They don't pay a fee to do performing arts. But just to be uniform, we decided that two tickets would be afforded to all parents. So that's the dollar amount difference from this meeting from the last meeting.
And will students have to show some type of ID or some type of card?
Yes, yep. All non-students will be charged $5, but in the very first line, all PBID public students with a public school ID will be awarded free admission.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thanks, Mr. Olmio. Mrs. Carpenter?
Thank you. I just wanted to let the board know that in addition to this, there was an agreement reached with the hockey rink.
Thank you.
Whereas we used to split it, we would owe them, they have agreed to not charge us anything for those students or those parents, and they will just take the full gate of any other spectators, whereas we used to split that and we would owe them the money. So that kind of made up the difference that some of the members were concerned about.
Thank you, Mrs. Carpenter. Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just concerned that we're going to hit our budget for up to $33,000, and I'm wondering what the impact on the budget is, if it's an unknown. I understand this is a trial for a year, but normally, when we're doing something like this, we would have, we would have had a lot of, a lot of facts and figures in front of us, and I just don't want to be caught at the end of the year looking for that amount of money and not having it for something that you need for athletics or for performing arts. And I'm just, if either Dr. Levine or Mr. Stanton could give any advice on that, I really am looking to you for some, some advice in that respect.
Mayor?
Sure. The way that this will impact us is, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jared, actually, don't you dare correct me, is if, I believe that we will be taking less money as the offset from athletics. We typically plan on $116,000, 16 of which is from...
So 116 is user fees, and then another 16 is gate receipts.
So we take that money, and we will reduce that and have to find it somewhere else in the budget. So the offset that we count on will be reduced by $30,000, and we'll have to find that elsewhere.
Do we know presently if we're looking at any other cuts coming down the pike with the federal and state government, as far as, I know they can always do the 9C cuts, but if we got any inkling on what's going to happen with education budgets over this, you know, the course of this fiscal year?
I have not been made aware of anything imminent.
And neither have I, but I will inform the board that we're looking very closely every day at our operating budget, which I feel that before Thanksgiving I will have to freeze.
Well said.
I think so, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Miko, then Mr. Rozignol.
Through the chair, thank you, Mr. Mayor. To Mr. Rozignol, can we just amend that part on parents of PBID to include parents or guardians?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Great, yeah, we haven't, well, this is going to be first reading today.
This is just the first reading, yep.
I think that's a good, yeah, good addition. Mr. Rozignol?
Just for clarification, in my own mind, when you were saying that we have, we receive a $116,000 offset, we don't ever really hit that number as far as an offset, do we?
Probably not.
So in actuality, even though that's the budgeted number of an offset, what do we normally take in from athletic fees?
Closer to 90?
Yeah.
Closer to 90.
So we're already really talking about an added 20 on top of the 20?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rozignol. Mr. Hockman?
Thank you. This may seem like a really small gesture or a nice gesture, but what we're talking about here is a philosophical change in how we do business in the city of PBID. We're now saying to our students and to parents or guardians, we're encouraging them to attend their children performing, whether it be on the athletic fields or in the performing arts. And I want to thank the subcommittee, Ms. Carpenter and Mr. Rozignol, for including the performing arts, because that was something that was discussed and debated, and I think is important to include, and I'm happy to see it. We will be talking in the spring about budgets and budget impacts that this policy is going to have, and I think it's, I hope the conversation comes out where we, as a school department, fund the, these programs completely, and don't ask the parents of the student athletes or the student performers to bear the burden for allowing their kids the opportunity to represent our city, whether it be on the stage, in a music hall with instruments or with singing, or on a football field or a basketball court. It's something that I think is the right thing to do, and the mayor led this charge in the conversation a month ago, so I want to thank him for his leadership on that, but it will have a budget impact, and it's something that we are going to need to address, to address in the future. And I just want to make one minor point, and it's not really intended to start a debate, but I know it's been thrown out there about user fees in athletics. And user fees in athletics, in my mind, are something that I... And user fees in athletics, in my mind, are something that I wish we didn't have. I think everyone on this board wishes that we didn't have. But it's, they were developed because years before anyone, except for maybe Ms. Dunn and maybe Ms. Carpenter were on this board, I mean, there was a conversation about what, what we were going to do about athletics because there wasn't enough money to fund athletics and academic programs, and that's how the user fee developed. And, but I don't think that that, in and of itself, is a reason, or not having a user fee for music and, music and drama is a reason to not give parents or guardians of those children two tickets to the performances that their children play in. If, we have plenty of student athletes who participate in three sports, a fall sport, a winter sport, and a spring sport, and if there are two parents who receive tickets to each of the home events of those student athletes' games or competitions, it would, it would take only 30 home events for them to get free tickets to, to render the user fee meaningless. In other words, each home event would give a parent two tickets, or parents of a student athlete two tickets, which would equal $10, and 30 events would be equal $300, which is the family, the family cap on student athletic fees for a year. So many students who participate in athletics essentially don't pay a user fee because their parents are receiving the money back with tickets to those sporting events. So I just wanted to throw that out there. I know that, and I don't want to pit student athletes against student performers in arts and music, because that's not my intent here, but I just wanted to just make a point that I believe that the policy that is before us, that I plan on voting in favor of, is fair and equitable to all students and all parents and all guardians, and I'm happy to see that the process worked and that the conversation happened and that we developed this policy.
Well, thank, okay, I don't want to get into a debate about user fees. It's not on the agenda, so it's not something we can discuss, but briefly, Mr. Rosignol?
Through the chair, Dr. Levine. Can you just make sure that Mr. Simmons knows that his program will be whole despite the parents having two tickets for gates? And if there's any way to quantify that for this year going forward, that will help us budgetarily next year.
That's good recommendation. I'll make sure that happens.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosignol. Mrs. Dunn?
I just have a question about a specific follow-through. Tonight, we heard the students speak about the Coffee House and the talent show. Does this impact the Coffee House and the talent show? Because?
Yes and no. The Coffee House, no, because it's student-run, student-driven, and it is their performance. The other ones, absolutely.
The talent show will be affected?
Correct. Yes.
And that was utilized to raise funding for their competitions in the spring?
Just through the chair, if this is only a first reading, it's not policy yet, and the talent show is Saturday night, so I'd suggest that it does not impact the talent show. First reading does not implement the policy.
Didn't, didn't we vote on something at the last meeting, though? Not so much a policy, but it was going to?
Yeah, we did that for, the motion was made for that specific football game before it was taken up in committee. I suggest that we would be allowed to do that as well. I would submit that we do that.
So it would impact the talent show?
I think it would just have to be a separate motion.
Through the chair, Ms. Dunn's question, if I may.
Yep.
One of the reasons for my point to Dr. Levine is I don't want our decision here tonight to impact any programs at the high school for this year. So the talent show or the Coffee House, whatever monies that they were expected, will be made whole through our budget. So whether we decide to implement this policy after our first reading with the provisos that we've mentioned, no program is going to be left unwhole because of any decision we've made for this year.
Thank you. Mrs. Carpenter?
I'm going to deviate a little bit. I didn't know if they were going to keep talking about that. Mrs. Dunn?
I'm done.
Or if anybody had it on that subject, and then I'll take my turn.
Mr. Hockman, were you on?
Yeah.
Was it pertaining to that? Okay.
Yes, and just very briefly, and thank you, Ms. Carpenter. That was my point about the philosophical change that we're experiencing now, is that I think that those programs must be kept as they are, but the funding source for them needs to come from the school department. That was, so thank you, Mr. Rosignol. Thank you, Ms. Carpenter.
Mrs. Carpenter?
Just to the, back to the, the athletics, in regards to the football games, a long time ago, when we took the stands down on the opposite side, and there were a few members here at that time, and I specifically remember Mrs. Dunn and I talking about once something comes down, it never goes back up. We talked about that a lot. We knew that once we voted to take those stands down on the opposite side of the field that we would never get them back. It's about 10 years later and we still don't have them. I know that for a game, we have rented some, and my concern is that now I'm expecting an increased attendance to these games. And what I wanted to know is if we could look at putting in new stands on the opposite side. I know that you're going to, Mr. Mayor, be going before the city council. We're going to be talking about capital. In the past, when we've talked about it, there was an issue about the fire engines getting through. I think there's been some changes on the size back there, and it's, you know, cement now, and maybe instead of the stands that go as far back, maybe we could shorten them and widen them instead, but it's something that I'd really like to look at to see if we could possibly put the stands back on the other side.
On that, Mr. Rosignol?
Through our last meeting, that was part of the topic. I know Mr. Hockman mentioned earlier that we're hoping to change our philosophy and encourage students to, to attend games. So in conjunction with the increased attendance at the football games, we asked Mr. Buah to go and meet with the police captain, I mean, I'm sorry, the fire captain, to see how much of a distance we need in order to have some sort of stands there and to start looking at pricing of what some stands on that side would cost. So just for the board's edification.
No, and I, I think that matter should be put into committee. I know Mr. Miko has the building and grounds committee. We're going to be having future meetings to make some determinations as to what may or may not be submitted for a capital request that I anticipate probably next year will be made. Good, we can do that. I just want to say, and, you know, Mrs. Carpenter mentioned that she expects, and I hope that we have an increase in the students attending the, the games and the performances. I mean, to me, that's what this was all about. I do think that it did have an impact, and there, there are probably some students that may not have gone to games or performances because of that extra few bucks. Taking that away, I think, is just really adjusted to promote community pride, pride at PBD High School, pride, you know, across the city. I always want, I know, not just I, all of us, want all of our students going through the system to go to PBD High School and feel good about that. And we want our students to see what, what we have in our sports programs, what we have in the amazing performing, performing arts programs here in the city. And I think that's, this is just a small gesture to make that happen. You know, we want our, our middle school kids to see our high school performances, and we want our elementary school kids to see our middle school performances, to, to get excited and think about what they can accomplish and what they can do at, at their next step in their educational journey. So I'm very excited about this. I know it's going to have an impact, and Mrs. Dunn is rightly concerned. I think we all are, and I think that can be addressed. There's things that happen during the course of a, a school year where either there's extra money that we get because of a decision or something happened, but also because we have to make a new hire or make a further investment that we have to try to account for that and make some changes and make some adjustments in the year ahead. So I think this was a good vote. I'm very happy about it. I want to thank Mr. Rosignol, Mrs. Carpenter for this. I know we still have to have another reading. It's not a final vote yet, but I do think this is just a gesture to try to promote PBD pride. And to me, it means a lot when you have other students coming to see you perform and see you play, and we want to try to encourage that as best we can, and I appreciate this being tackled. It's not an easy, not an easy decision, but I do think this is a, a great step forward for us.
So I'd make a motion to accept this draft as the first reading.
Second. Further motion by Mr. Rosignol, seconded by Mr. Hockman. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Rosignol?
Yes.
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 No.
Ms. Dunn, would you like me to submit this to Quality and Standards, come out of Bureau Committee for second reading?
Sure, and, and put in the language where you want it, yeah, and we'll bring, we'll bring it forward at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Mr., with Mr. Miko's addition.
May I, may I suggest a motion that states that all activities and events covered by this policy in first reading be implemented now until second reading takes place at the table?
Motion to follow the recommendation of the superintendent.
Second.
Further motion by Mr. Hockman, seconded by Mr. Rosignol. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Rosignol?
Yes.
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 Okay. Thank you, Mr. Rosignol.
Thank you.
Quality and Standards, Mrs. Dunn?
Nothing to report at this time, other than the fact that we will have a meeting before the next school committee meeting to approve the policy, which was just discussed.
Well done. Thank you. City Council and Advisory Boards, Mrs. Dunn, anything to report?
Just that we will be having our parent advisory board meeting on Monday, October 23rd, here at Higgins at 7:00 PM.
Great. Thank you. Building and grounds, Mr. Miko?
Not at this time, Mr. Mayor, but we will be scheduling a meeting soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Special advisory, parent, special education, parent advisory board, Mr. Olympia?
Yes, we, we had our first meeting. It was Monday, October, the 2nd of October. Mr. Miko and Ms. Dunn were in attendance, and I appreciated Mr. Rosignol and Mr. Hockman stopping by after their education subcommittee. We had a nice turnout. There's probably about 15 parents there, and Ms. Grooby was there to, again, to explain all the different programs that we have in the district regarding special education. She went by each, each school, each program, and it was really informative to the parents, and I, I think you could really see the appreciation from the parents that they have this type of forum, this type of access to our committee. It was really sort of a meet and greet type of thing, and they issued, I mean, they spoke with Ms. Grooby with some questions and general concerns, but all in all, it was very positive, and I do think some great things will come out of this subcommittee, and, and again, once the committee was, we finished up, a lot of the parents had a lot of great positive feedback. So thank you again for the school committee, for their support, and the mayor and the administration. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Olympia. Okay, new business? Next item, items for next agenda. We'll be handling the regular course. Please put any submissions to Dr. Levine or myself so we can include those in the next school committee meeting, which is scheduled for Tuesday, October 24th.
Motion to go into executive session with the intent of not coming back to regular session.
Thank you, Mr. Hockman, for that motion, seconded by Mr. Rosignol. All in favor? It's a vote. Thank you for a good meeting, everyone.